Mike.
President.
Greg. John.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion for the dissent agenda?
I'd like to ask a question.
Okay.
This back-to-school night for three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-seven, what is that?
Stephanie Kimberley went and purchased items from Sam's Club for Drayton, so we're reimbursing her. They got cookies, supplies. It's the event that's happening this evening.
Does the city have a credit card for him or?
We do.
How's going to be using?
You said it was Sam's Club?
Yes.
Probably have you as your own account for Sam's Club.
We don't have any time for Sam's Club?
I don't believe Park and Rec has a Sam's card.
Uh-uh.
Does the city itself?
Fire department.
The one I know that does is the fire department.
The city doesn't.
Need a motion for the same agenda?
So moved.
A motion or a petition? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public agenda, this is the time and place for discussion items, not already on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. Bart, do you have anything to say? You're in public, you've got. Mayor O'Connor to read and sign five seasons stand-down proclamation. Whereas Valley River Power Incorporated, in partnership with Cedar Rapids Metro Area Veterans Council, Iowa City VA Medical Center and the Lynn County Comminion of Care, will hold Lynn County Sixteenth Annual Stand Down for homeless and near-homeless veterans and non-veterans. And whereas stand-down is a term used in times of war in which exhausted combat units come off the battlefield, rest and recover in a place of safety. And whereas according to the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs, the first stand-down was organized in nineteen eighty-eight by a group of Vietnam veterans in San Diego. And whereas today's stand-down also refers to a community-based program to assist homelessness and near-homeless, home and near-homelessness veterans transition to community living and providing access to human services, agencies, including benefits counseling, employment and training assistance, IAGs, healthcare screenings, housing services, legal assistance, mental health treatment, and substance abuse counseling. And whereas stand-down have been used to, used as an effective tool in reaching out to homeless veterans nationally, nationally, reaching more than two-hundred thousand veterans and their family members. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of Lisbon, City of Lisbon, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September first, twenty-two, as the Sixteenth Annual Five Seasons Stand Down Day. Encourage residents to recognize the positive impacts of this effect to assist veterans and to express gratitude to those that have served and continue to serve. Discussion possible action in reference to history center repairs.
Becky and Ann had requested, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, they had requested this be on for tonight. I know that Becky and I met with a gentleman after that meeting in reference to another company coming in and potentially looking at it for paint stripping, further paint stripping. They were supposed to get her a quote. I just, unless you have questions, I just assume we table it since they're not here on Zoom.
He's got a question. On this bid, it says, uh... Battle roof, who paint entire storefront for forty for five thousand dollars? And putting in a door through the door, right?
Some of this stuff, um... You on the storefront part?
Yeah, and then there's one on here I read where it says they were, uh, they were gonna put a door on.
The second, it's at the window, the second floor.
I think that's, that's part of the next, that's a further phase. But the main, the main stuff on this was discuss the, uh, the mortar and what they're gonna do with the paint.
Oh, I don't think so. I was just gonna say that, uh, when, when the second part, then if you're gonna pay somebody that kind of money to put in a door, unless you should find somebody else.
Yeah, no, this wasn't referenced, it's gonna be for the masonry to work and figure out what they wanna do with the paint stripping.
It seemed like a lot, but those commercial doors, if that's what they're talking about, are just outrageously expensive. So if you spend that summer in place, I think it was...
It's for labor, that was.
Yeah, the labor, yeah, unless they had to rip everything out. They just need to redo everything, right?
It's like, you know, some of the stuff, the labor's three hundred dollars per, uh, three hundred bucks and the labor's four five thousand.
Yeah.
So when they did the study, they submitted this, um, this quote. As you see, the lead painted pavement, twenty-nine seven on the first thing, that's actually already been done and paid. So they're just kinda working their way through it. If you go down to the, where it talks about the bricks, the number of bricks and all that, he came back and valued it after the stripping and said that that bid is still pretty accurate. So, um, it wasn't gonna be really anything to, uh, really vote on, I don't think, tonight. It was just gonna be to discuss what they found, what they kinda wanted to do going forward, so.
Just to honor your grant money?
Um, they did receive that grant for twenty-two thousand, but that doesn't quite cover everything.
The sixties, the sixties, that grant. So, the question is, where is that going to go from?
Well, right now, um, we have... Just give you a rundown from last year. Uh, I believe we budgeted, uh, we used thirty-four thousand. I remember they got some grant money, they had twenty-five thousand last year. They exceeded that thirty-four thousand, but a lot of that was in grant money. Current budget, they have twenty-five thousand for the history center and another twenty-five thousand for the library. Um, I don't believe the library is gonna need all that, um, all their money. So, um, we can talk about on the next amendment possibly, um, using some of that, those funds, but sort of figure out exactly what the next step is.
Well, I guess I'd have to hear that from the library board. I don't wanna get into...
Well, the, yeah, they got, so they got grants last year, they, they just received a couple more grants. And so the, the work that, um, some of that work's gonna be paid with, with grant money. Um, so I don't believe that the work left on the library is going to, um, be used up too well.
But we can't transfer grant money applied for, for the library though, to the history center, but we could transfer funds.
No, but you, the city committed. The city set aside fifty thousand, twenty-five for each building.
There you go.
So we could do a budget amendment to take ten thousand from that over to the library, or to the history center. Once we figure out, but I think they're actually applying for one more grant. Um, and I think the library just applied for one. So once we figure out all that, I think then we'll have the number of what we need and what we need to come up with.
Is there anything about those grants that was contingent or at least promised? Because the city was making an investment and if we make that amendment, we'd be reneging on that.
I don't think so because it's still, that's still funding that we have. Been our funds.
Just if we didn't do it, then we...
If you didn't do it, then obviously you wouldn't get the grant money.
Yeah, we would lose the grant money.
It's only two thousand. But similar to, very similar to the paint one, you know, we got the, it was right around that, it was paying. Um, you know, I think it was nineteen thousand for paint. So we just had to produce the other part of that to get that project completed.
Well, I'm in favor of moving forward the timely passion so we can get it buttoned up before winter.
There you go.
I, I would like to talk to the board first.
I do too.
Yeah.
I don't wanna go forward with anything until I know.
I'd recommend just, I can put this on for the next meeting and maybe Becky will have. I tried calling her, um, earlier today, um, she didn't answer, but I was, I just assumed I'd come here and see what they, what they come up with. So I'll put it on for the next meeting.
Well, we have to be awfully sound financial for the future ground with some plans, you know, in addition.
I agree, Mike. I, I think that...
I'm not exactly sure this is all our responsibility as city government.
It's our building.
Yeah, but...
No, I think what, I, I, this is my feeling on it is that we're investing a lot of money, whether it's grant money or not, that it, we're putting into something. I'm all about historical preservation, don't get me wrong. But what revenue comes from this building? If we're taking our own city funds, what revenue are we getting out of this building? And what is the future of that building? I guess that's what we have to kind of sit and think about and run it through our mind and ask them what. What's the future of this building?
Yeah, 'cause this has been and is appearing to continue to be nothing but a money pit.
Exactly.
And, and, and yeah, it's gotta bring benefits to the community, it can't continue to just eat away at the...
Correct.
...public funds. And, you know, maybe, maybe this, this meeting would be best served if this building was sold.
I would like to know how many people come in there in a, a week? You know, what, what kind of traffic are we getting in there? Is it a place where everybody just wants to donate stuff from their house that they don't want anymore? Or is afraid to get rid of it? You know, like, I just, I would like to, I would just like to know what the future for this building really looks like.
And if there's some sort of cash flow that they can generate.
Exactly. What can, there needs to be some kind of, you know, yes.
Right now, the only revenue we have would leave is grants that they receive. And, um, actually, we pay them five thousand dollars.
And there's apartments that they're renting out and getting the income from.
Correct.
I, I never heard the city doing that, ever.
That, that reimburses us for the property tax we have to pay on that building since it is, uh, two rental spaces upstairs.
But if we are getting it, it isn't reimbursing us?
Yeah, it's not reimbursing us, they're, they're getting it.
It's funding their programs, which, what are the benefits of their programs?
It, yeah, it's in exchange for the five thousand that's on the books. We really don't exchange money though, right?
No, what it was...
We don't get any of the revenue.
What it was, John, was before, I'm not, I'm just gonna make this fictitious numbers. We gave them ten thousand dollars and we got the revenue, well, we got the rent. Now we, they said it, they, uh, get five thousand from rent, they say, so we cut their budget to five thousand.
Right, that's an offset, yeah.
That's what it was. I mean, you guys say it's a money pit, we don't get any revenue from it and everything, I understand that a hundred percent. How much money do we make off the wall? How much do we make off the park? I mean, it's a building we own, we gotta take care of it until we get take care of, I mean, we gotta take care of or fix it. And we're making everybody else in town fix their properties and we gotta fix ours.
And you're right, the revenue...
Till we can sell.
You're right, there's no revenue from the park, in fact, it also, we're investing ten thousand dollars into a shed that we are getting use from, but, um, we keep pouring money into that as well. And we do that for the benefit of the school and the people in our community.
So the school pays the city ten thousand dollars a year, five years, you don't consider that revenue?
I don't, I don't...
Don't consider, there's a lot more cost of maintaining that park than that revenue. And they take control of that park during the prime season of the year.
I'll tell you how I feel, but I think we're getting double taxed because we have the tax money from the city based ten thousand dollars which we pay the school also, money for taxes. I guess that, that, that's how I feel about it.
I mean, we don't, we don't need to talk about that right now. I mean, we're, the history center, so that's...
I guess, I guess my biggest thing is before we go out and get all these grants, because in those grants, there's stipulations of that we have to own these properties for so long. If there is a future that we are looking to sell these, fix them up and sell them, I don't know if grant, it, grants are the way to go because we might be locked in or we're paying those grants back. So those are things that we have to be obviously aware of before they go applying for all of these grants as well.
We need to guarantee a commitment from that group.
That's, that's just it.
Officer, you got, I can think of one, two, three, three buildings downtown right now that are sitting vacant. You know, I mean, in any one of, yeah, the history center, I told you, I have four people, four things downtown that are vacant, I mean... I'm just saying, in my personal opinion, and I, I'll go, it's our building, we gotta take care of it.
Oh, I agree. I, I agree that we have to take care of it, I just think that we need to look into the future of it.
Just one, one final note, though. They do have fundraisers there to pay for the utilities and, and to run the building. And as far as being locked in, I think five years is about the maximum for payback that's prioritized. So I wouldn't worry too much about that part.
Well, I think that's, you know, a sole meeting in the future.
Yeah.
Let's, uh...
Put it on the next agenda.
Meet with the, with that committee and maybe a committee before a council meeting.
Go to the next agenda.
Will do.
Public hearing for fiscal year twenty-three budget amendment number one, need a motion to go public hearing.
The motion to go on the second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Going into public hearing at seven fifteen.
I'd let everybody see this, the copy of it. So if you, I'm gonna go down to the bottom, down to the explanation, that would be the simplest way to do it. Uh, we'll start with revenues. Ten thousand revenue came from the Channel C donation for trees. Ten thousand would be the school portion of the shed. Thirty-seven, four seventy-one sixty-five would be the final payment that we received from EMC for deracial damage. Expenditures, fifty thousand for fire department gear. If you recall, that was a grant through the AFG program. Our gear is not in, it was supposed to be in in spring, still not in. Um, so we had it budgeted last year, so we've already recouped that, well, we will recoup that money once we repay it. So that'll, that was already been approved. Uh, ten thousand for the park shed, which we've approved. And then ten thousand for the recreation shed. So we take ten in and then we spend the twenty for the whole project. Twenty-six thousand electrical for parks for the ground maintenance. That was a bill that was already approved, but it came after the fiscal year, so that's why that's there. Ten thousand for Channel C for the tree donation, so that is for planting the trees. Um, I will say that, uh, the tree and park, uh, nature park board is applying for the deracial grant to stay for up to five thousand dollars. So they're working, kinda all working together on that, so we'll see where that goes. Um, then two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand one oh six, which was budgeted last year for the sports complex. Obviously, they haven't used all that, so we're just moving that to this year, uh, for the remaining of that. And then, uh, transfers, so when we did the bid for the sports complex, we talked about using the capital improvement, so that's moving one-hundred-and-fifty thousand out of, uh, parks' capital improvement into the sports complex project, which will cover the remaining of the, the remainder of the bill. Any questions?
The Channel C trees, is that already committed to a specific location or something? Or is that just generally?
No, it's, that's kinda what I thought, we'd probably end up paying for replanting the trees between now and the fiscal year.
Okay, generally within the community, not...
So those are the ones, so the, the deracial one and the, I believe it's the trees forever, John, you can help me. The trees forever, I know cannot go into a park, is my understanding.
They could change the rules.
Yeah.
I used to do that, but I, if that, yeah, the rules changed.
And so, um, and then there's some, some limitations on the DNR one. So this'll get, you know, the ones we taken out of the park, they wanna put some at the nature park, that type of stuff, we can...
Okay.
And if they don't get the grant, then we'll at least have ten thousand there to, that we've been paid through insurance already. It's really nothing, nothing really on here is anything over and above except the store shed. Everything else has either been recouped or approved or we already have the money for.
Thank you.
Anybody got any question? Motion to go out of public hearing?
Motion to go out of public hearing?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion possible action in reference to fiscal year twenty-three budget amendment number one, resolution twenty-two, twenty-two. The motion to...
Motion to approve the budget amendment?
Second.
Motion second. Nate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Greg? John?
Aye.
Aye.
Library board resignation letter for Mary Anza Hornet.
That's the only correspondence I have, um, as you can see, she's joining the nature park, um, board, tree board, so.
Do you have a motion, Senator?
Oh, yeah.
She, she just, she just was nice and self-aware.
Well, we thank her for her service.
Yes.
It isn't like she can get out of everything.
No, she's got a lot on her plate.
City engineer board?
He's not on, um, they're still working, doing surveying, I haven't seen him around town. So we're still waiting to hear back from the DNR on the well, so we do, we have all the stuff, hopefully, come.
When you see them, dinner and yawn, surveying, what, what exactly are they surveying for?
For the water main. So they gotta have marks, so when they set, we have contractors come in, they'll give them coordinates of where that main's gotta be placed. So they have to go off of benchmarks to get that. So like the curb's not gonna move or the park sign's not gonna move, so they're going out and getting benchmarks. And you'll see X's and curbs with numbers on them and...
Yeah. Any other questions for city engineer?
Where the public's work?
Uh, hopefully, our paint will be in Monday. It is, uh, the date, the last email we just got, so hopefully we can start on getting everybody painted. With that said, I just wanna thank, uh, all the volunteers for the sauerkraut days. I think they did a heck of a job, uh, from what I've seen, Saturday, they looked pretty busy down there. And then our summer kids are now officially done and they too did a great job this summer.
So your, your paint, you get?
Yep.
You, you can't use a water-based?
No, it is water-based. The paint we're using is water-based. That lady just said that, when she said what she said was just on oil-based paint.
Where do you get it?
So we're getting ours from the DOT. So we went in the state pool to buy it. Well, our, our quantity is not very large, so obviously we got pushed down the list, this is the first time we've...
Do you want some white?
So, uh, we need quite a bit.
You want some yellow, blue? Do you know where I get, get it at?
Sherman Williams.
Yeah.
It's two to three times as much from there.
That's why they jumped on that bid.
How many buckets do you get?
When we order fifty five-gallon pails of white, um...
So you're larger quantity?
Yeah.
I got twenty-five gallons for like four hundred, or half of fifty, almost fifty gallons for seven hundred and...
Yeah.
Somewhere.
So with this, it's, I mean, it dropped our budget at least, at least a third, if not half. That's why we went this way.
You might, I'll pitch you.
Yeah. We might, we might have to take you up.
Yeah, 'cause we don't have the cheaper stuff.
Yeah.
Who did, Travis?
Nope.
Anybody got anything for Travis?
Personally, I'd like to add, he's down at the back-to-school night department.
Do you leave anything?
No.
Police firm?
I did, well, one thing, they did, um, work with Mount Vernon and with everything going on, they decided to move soccer and football back a week, I think that was on the internet, so.
Police firm?
Just want to, uh, again reiterate what Travis was saying, the soccer raises committee and the crew and Brandon, uh, everybody did a great job managing the, the weekend, uh, everything went really well. We had no issues, um, on our side of it, so kudos to everybody and a hat tip to them for their hard work and making a great event. Uh, just wanna remind the public again, tomorrow's gonna be a crazy day in the morning, gonna be a lot of kids running around and school buses driving around and everything else, so reminding everybody to drive safe, we'll be watching, make sure that you are, so.
Will there be somebody over here?
Yeah.
Did, um, you didn't have any incidents, is that right?
Yeah, I agree.
Just a storm.
Just a storm.
They did a good job clearing out everything.
They did.
I was thinking about that and I bought the bar in two thousand, I think that's the first time we ever had it.
I remember it in Tampa. Yeah. Wasn't me at all.
Well, was that before two thousand eleven, though? 'Cause I bought the bar in two thousand one. I don't think it's right since.
And I'm serious with standing, so I remember when you poured, but...
Maybe so.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I mean, they, they, they were ahead of the storm, but, I mean, I luckily got everything inside just as it had. Saturday, was that a Collier Fun Club?
Yes.
Got any amendments or anybody got anything else from Doug?
Any moves? Uh, nothing.
Virgie?
We had the bathtub races, um, Saturday, uh, the part of sauerkraut days. Everybody came down in the morning, uh, seven o'clock, filled four thousand balloons. Probably could've sold another two thousand.
So you're gonna give them a venture?
About thirteen hundred dollar profit, when it was all said and done, so, uh, there were six teams and it's like everybody had a really good time. I tried to stay back so I didn't get any good feelings, but, um...
It'd be interesting to know how many dollars since that whole thing has started. That's the dumbest thing in the world, was bathtub races. They've been going on now for fifteen years, draws the biggest crowd for more. But, uh, yeah, it's just amazing.
Yeah.
To me.
Then they, uh, we also washed the streets on, uh, last Monday and then again Sunday. Now we're moving on to the prepping for the pancake breakfast. And then I'd also like to announce that we received a five-thousand-dollar grant for a Lucas device, which is a automated CPR machine, they're roughly about fifteen thousand, so we got the maximum award through the St. Luke's Foundation, so...
Didn't we already have one?
No. Uh, we have a...
It was more we budgeted for one about four or five years ago.
We did a, a cardiac monitor, but not a Lucas device.
So what's a Lucas device?
It's a, it's actually a box that actually does the, looks like a monitor, so...
Automatic press compression.
So we have to come up with ten thousand?
Yeah, but I, between the, uh, pancake breakfast and what the association has, um, I don't, we're not gonna have an issue coming up with it, so... It'll be, it'll be bought, and like I said last time, also, we're open to purchase that solar unit too, so I'd like to get both of them in by the end of the year. That is it, fire department related.
You got anything to do for the fire department? City military?
Just kinda circling back to this downtown reinvestment, I did meet with Becky and Ann on that as well. If you remember, we talked about doing the signs out on the highway, we had one business get back to us with an application. So, um, I'm gonna put it on for the next meeting, um, to see what we wanna do with that, those funds, pit funds. If we need to up the money, limit the amount of awards, 'cause I think, uh, exterior is up to five thousand, interior is twenty-five hundred. I know that doesn't go very far now, so I don't know if we need to up that, but I at least wanna get some, what we wanna do with those funds, so. I'm gonna put that on for the next meeting as well. Big thanks to Public Works, uh, for all the hard work, um, over the last couple of weeks, prepping for, uh, sauerkraut days. And, uh, the sauerkraut committee does a phenomenal job, and I just, I feel what Travis and Doug had said about them. They actually are a pretty good crew on Friday night. We had an officer south of town, just where the storms were coming from, and they were kinda popping up and dissipating. Uh, they had another officer at, uh, down by Kohl's, and a third one, Doug actually was out at thirteen and thirty, um, just monitoring the lightning and the storm and was reporting back to me. So a little after eight, we decided that, um, it was pretty imminent and, um, the crew wanted twenty to thirty minutes, we had met earlier in the day, and I got... We had met earlier in the day, got a plan together, and they wanted twenty to thirty minutes to evacuate, and, um, I think by the time that everything was evacuated, everybody got to a safe place. Couldn't have been a couple more, a couple minutes before it got loose, so.
Another rule of what?
Kudos to everybody. We tried holding off for a little bit, but, um, we just kept monitoring the lightning, and, um, there was still stuff coming that had lightning in it, so that's when they made the call on, I think it was the right decision, cancel everything. Um, but it was, really it was flawless. I mean, it was kind of a tricky situation, cause it wasn't an event where it's straight-lined storms that are coming through. This was just sporadic stuff moving all different directions, so. Kudos to everybody involved, and everybody got home safe, which is the biggest thing. Um, Dr. Kirk Blanks, he's, uh, working on that second barn over there. He did, uh, get most of the tin on that was missing. He stabilized one area so he could get up there and put the tin on. Uh, he has three pieces of tin that are remaining that he has on order, so he's not sure when that'll be here, but as soon as he gets it, he'll get the s- uh, south side, um, put up. Uh, he's also gonna have a meeting with Becky Nann, uh, just kinda to go over the next steps and, um, keep everybody in the loop as to progress. Sports complex update, uh, water sewer, uh, storm sewer is all in, it's been tested, everything's functioning as it should. Uh, they took out the road on Third Avenue today. Uh, the plan is, weather, um, defending is, uh, to start, um, paving next week. So they got a utility pole that they gotta get moved, but the hope is they'll, uh, start paving next week and, uh, continue pushing forward there, so. Um, I think we're probably right on track. Um, we're at least within a day or two of where they wanna be, so.
Question on that road, the one by the white barns, uh, where, where the existing road lets off, it's a pretty, pretty good rise there, and then they came up to it. So that's gonna be a, I could see me jumping that in.
You could, you could.
In a car.
Not in a car, maybe a bicycle.
I would assume.
Are they going to look, level that more?
I would assume they put all that to grade. I, it's my understanding, they might even be going back to the intercept, to, uh, not the intersection, but passing right away, right?
Yeah, so where we were working.
Yeah.
With that water service, all that's coming out.
Okay.
All that's busted out, so, yeah, so we're gonna pop fire hydrant from the fire hydrant.
I can see some grain.
Yeah.
Flying twenty-five feet on into the, missing the turnoff. Right, the way it is right now. You could get air for a horn there.
How far do you think it could fly in court?
It's coming down is the problem. I know I could lift off.
Anything else for Brandon?
No.
Chris, you got anything?
I don't have anything right now.
Kansas, or St. Louis, or St. Louis?
Um, I do want to thank everybody, the committee, the police department, um, the Public Works guys, everyone who had a hand in the Sauerkraut, um, days, cause it, it was a good time, and I don't think there were any issues at all, so, besides the storm, so. Um, thank you to all involved on that. Um, I know the ambulance isn't here, but I do know that last week, they were notified that they were approved to operate critical care. So that's the highest level of critical care, um, that they can get, so congratulations to the ambulance, that's definitely, um, it's a, it's, it's nice to know that we live in this area and they can do that now. Um, let's see, school starts tomorrow, so keep your eyes out for children, and that's all I got.
John?
Well, thanks to everybody involved in Sauerkraut Days, and a special thanks to the city crew. I know they really appreciated, uh, the support, and. I, I thought it was exceptionally clean festival, there was very little litter that I saw on the ground, and thanks for the, uh, Fire Department that cleaned up before and after. And thank you to Mary Ann for her continued, uh, service to the community. That's all I got.
Um, just thank everybody for the Sauerkraut Days and all the hard work. Um, I could take note on, um, an issue that was rose on social media, um, about the softball tournament. Um, what I'd like to see is us put on the next agenda, get the noise like Manchester, and just open it up to alcohol in the park. I received some phone calls and some people screaming and hollering at me that I was the cause of this, but if we remember, there was five other people, five other people up here that voted for it, not to do it. And I just think it's a time that we should just open it up. It's not been a problem. Um, get the softball tournament back going here, that is, uh, great revenue. People come to towns, once are down there, they go town, spend money. Um, I think we can survive a, a couple times with that, you know? Like I said, there's never been any issues, so just, just open up. I know there's a few cities that's got an ordinance that allows it. Um, we get people that, uh. You know, the renter, renter facility's out, so don't think it's gonna happen, but, um, I just think it's, it's time that we just think about it and maybe get, see some ordinance and revisit it.
Well, I got it broiled a little bit with that.
Hold on, you got?
Um.
Hold.
Well, and the, the next thing I, is, uh, how much drugs, did the drug drop off taken?
I don't know yet. For the event down here?
Yeah, Amy?
We had six hundred seventy-five people through. Through that event.
Little two.
Is it the Police Department? Huh?
For what?
With the Wellness Coalition.
Wellness.
They had over six hundred people through that night?
Yeah.
Wow.
Someone got counted more than once, I was the counter. I'd say there's an over six hundred. So do they still put up the signs, the drinking signs up there, do you know, or?
For the event?
Yeah, down, downtown.
I don't know if the Sauerkraut Days Committee had those or not. They had the no beer beyond this point and stuff like that posted up.
That's all I got.
Okay, now you can go back.
You sure?
Yeah.
I will make you laugh, I'm just kidding, go ahead.
Um, I was, you've been involved in that tournament, so let's just get honest, has there never, has there ever not been beer there?
This year.
Besides this year, they didn't have it?
Yeah.
That's what I assumed would probably happen, since for the last twenty years, it's always just mysteriously appeared, you know? They weren't selling it out of the concession stand, but, you know, they do have trunks and all of that. So I was shocked by the response that it, is that what we, I mean, I don't care, we could, but I don't know what a gram shop costs for a day for a, for a weekend.
Do you have a liquor license due?
You know?
Well, that's, that's for selling it. If you're allowing shit.
No, but I mean, if they, but see, we've, to my knowledge, it's always been bring your own. And, and so I, I got it broiled on that with JJ and some of those, you know, I mean, they were upset about it, but I never saw that it was, we did anything different.
So the night of the meeting, I asked what stance was of the council, and the council says we have an ordinance, which means no alcohol in the park. Which meant, I couldn't guarantee to the teams, or Drake couldn't guarantee to the teams, that if somebody called the cops down there, obviously, I assumed the police wouldn't just go down there and hand them a ticket, but if something escalated, we couldn't guarantee that there would be no tickets issued for doing something that we've done the last ten years since I've been here. Yeah. So when I informed the teams that, their stance was, they didn't wanna take the chance of being caught in some whitewash of somebody calling down because somebody had a beer down. So that's.
But you, that could still, I understand what you're saying, but if you had twenty beers, and there's a guy with a problem down there, he might still very well be calling the police.
Yeah.
If that happens.
Oh, absolutely. Takes one incident, one accident, and it comes back on the city.
So, that's right. I mean, here's the other deal, you have your parking director and your public works director that's putting this tournament out. So if there was an incident in the park without alcohol, that's not technically allowed down there for that event. That puts us in a really bad spot.
Cause I mean, even as you're acting as your own, you still.
If, if I had it, okay, you're in charge, I'm a ball player, pretend, and I've got beer in my trunk. You're liable?
If, if you're in that park, drinking.
The city is liable.
But I don't, I don't wanna say that Drake and I are married to that park for Wednesday night to Saturday night. So if something happens down there, it's technically, could fall back to us and.
Anybody can, any, anybody can go in and, let's say, I would never wanna see this happen. Somebody left drunk, got into an accident, killed somebody. The family of that person that was killed would come back on the city. They would then go after individuals on top of that. And that is something we cannot afford. Do we want to afford it? Nor do we want it to happen.
Well, so.
So there's a protection, yes.
I agree with what you're saying. I'm just trying to get, but, so we can't ever have that.
Well, there's why you said, we're, we've got a solution, right?
There's a, there's a solution.
Last, last year, when this got brought up, and it was, somebody had wanted to put a liquor license down there. I went, was instructed to go talk to our insurance agent to discuss that. So when we discussed it, he said the best case scenario to do this would be to have a licensed, a liquor license for the park to do it. Because then that create, that's, that's be the prequel who are liable.
City-owned, or the third party?
Whoever's, whoever's doing it. So, I mean, what I'm thinking about, just, just because, I've heard this all week, they're called city holidays, tracked me down, I, I, if I was downtown, I heard about it. So what, what I think, or one avenue I'd like to look at, is getting the parking rep to a five oh one C three organization, and have the parking rep get a liquor license. Because when this sports complex gets done, keep in mind, there's gonna be two diamonds out there. I would like to see twenty-five or fifty teams come to the Sauerkraut Days softball tournament and have two games going at once. And you can, and, and we wanna slow pitch softball, we wanna generate revenue, is, is the whole principle behind all this, and I've met with Drake numerous times about this. So let's get, you know, if, if, if they're five oh one C three, that, that helps protect the city. Keep in mind, whatever happens, it's still on city property, so we're probably gonna be named. I mean, it's just the way things are. However, I think our intentions of what we're doing that way makes the most sense. I don't think it makes a lot of sense to sit up here and say, well, enforce the ordinance, and then turn, turn to your eye like we've done for years, cause I don't think that's probably right. Thankfully, nothing's happened, but, you know, I mean, it's just a matter of time for something may, it only takes one, and then what happens? So, I don't know, that, that was kind of my, gonna be my approach, is to talk with the parking rep board, get their feelings on it, and then, as a caveat to this, it'd be a way to generate revenue, but.
The other thing, Sauerkraut Days Committee can also apply for a second license location. They can adopt their softball tournament as part of, make that a part of the events, have a secondary license that will cover that location as well as the downtown location. Those are easy, easy parts for that as well. There's options out there to allow this to happen.
And I think John brought this up last year, that, isn't there something, there is a reason why there is an ordinance, is because the people that don't even land did not want alcohol at the park?
That's what I've heard.
Okay.
I haven't seen it.
But I, I've also heard there's a contract that I've never seen.
Right, yes, but, I mean.
No one can produce any of that documentation or, or anything. You don't necessarily have to adhere to it.
Right.
And I, I, yeah, I.
I, I just remember John saying that last year, so I just, I wanted.
Well, I know that, um, Jerry had talked to me today, and he says, we're gonna do whatever we can to get that back. That was the biggest complaint. I feel it's a big concern. I want it addressed, one way or another, um, and I think we have a lot of time now, between now and then, to do this and do it right. I, it's just my, my thought. And I think if we can keep it in-house and use it as a revenue, that to me is the best, the best.
I agree with you. I, um, you know, last year not having the carnival, I've seen the decline of people. This year, not having so, sports, or having, I saw, I did see a decline. I mean, you, you, you used to see families come down, and you could tell they weren't playing softball, you know, and stuff, so. Yeah, we need, what about what we need to do with now, get it figured out, what we do?
Well, I think the.
We can't think about it two weeks before Sauerkraut Days, because we need three meetings to change the ordinance to allow for this kind of thing. So we need to start, discussion needs to start now. Get it done. And get it done, get it changed, get it, you know, get the organization set up, whatever it is.
I can only assume that, like, your question, like, I can only assume that the Thursday night activities will all be out here once this is done. That to me makes the most sense.
So we would want that area covered.
Traffic by that part, what's that?
So we would want that area covered also.
Well, that would be the only area.
That would be better, one area.
That would be the only area.
Once that's finished, I'm thinking next year, I'm not sure that we're gonna have that ready to play ball yet. I think, you know, we're gonna, we still establish the grass and everything else. So I think it's gonna be one more year over here, but then going forward, everything would be, be out there.
Fields, you know, foot fences in.
And I think.
Put the license there, two fields.
The Thursday night activities, you know, you're, you're realistically, your only traffic in and out is the people coming and going from there, so. If you've been by there on Thursday night, you have to go about five miles an hour so you don't run over somebody, so. Um, I don't know, I just, that's just my thought, and I don't really.
Well, I was kinda naive of whoever I talked to on the phone who didn't like me. I, cause I thought that it had always been this way, and we always just went ahead and had beers hidden someplace, and, and that's when they, when they were having the tournament. I didn't realize that, that, uh, something major changed. But, anyhow, whatever. It'll be ready for next year.
I think Brandon's got the right idea.
I think the right thing for our science is very clear.
If Brandon can just be working that.
Yeah, we'll work on it. Got anything else, Mike?
No.
Anything else?
No. Okay.
Um, I would also like to reiterate all the thanks for the, uh, the organizations that put on Sauerkraut Days. Yeah, Friday night, kind of stumped with being shut down, but, uh, Saturday was a lot of fun. I saw a lot of people downtown during the day. I didn't go down at night, but, um, you know, thanks to Public Works for everything that they've done to get ready to have the place. I thought, I think John said, it looked really good, um, downtown. Uh, of course, public safety, thank you, Doug and your team for ensuring that it was a safe event. I'm glad it was. I agree with Rick's, uh, comment that we need to figure out a way to get the Sauerkraut, get the softball tournament back with the allowance for a few beers during the, during the festivities. This, we're, we're not a bunch of bad guys up here on this council. We follow the law, and we don't make decisions that would skirt the law. We need to change the resolution, uh, our, our, our code to allow for this kind of thing, and have, maybe have the structure that, uh, that Brandon or, uh, is suggesting, or whatever is best practice. And, um, I guess that's it. All right, I, um, I also want to, I want to thank everybody that's involved in Sauerkraut Days, and everybody, I mean, it's unbelievable how it all comes together, and, I, I mean, you know, Friday night, when they shut everything down, how quick that, that was unbelievable. Um, you know, you just talked about, you know, the laws that we have to follow. I mean, I don't know, the, the public knows that we have a book of ordinances, that's basically the law of listening. I mean, there's a lot, there's stuff on there that none of us ever voted on, you know, or that we even know about, but it's an ordinance, you know, so, I mean, that's basically the law of listening. It's just like, that's the state laws that we have to follow, and then we have our ordinances we have to follow. Um, also, poles at the park, is that gonna get, will we get poles anytime?
Yeah.
So. And I also, I don't count that, but that's, that's city, city maintenance something. I think that's it. We got anything else? We got anything else? Anything?